All right. Thank you all for joining today. Twenty twenty two, this is a special meeting of the Springfield City Council. Madam Clerk, can you please call the role for us?
Counselor Perez.
Present.
Present Counselor Letterman.
Present.
Present Counselor Curran.
Present.
Present Counselor Walsh, absent Counselor Brown.
Present.
Present Counselor Davila.
Present.
Present Counselor Hurst.
Present.
Present Counselor Edwards. Absent Counselor Allen.
Present.
Present Counselor Govan.
Present.
Present Counselor Fenton.
Present.
Present Counselor Whitfield.
Present.
Present Counselor Williams.
Present, thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, at this time, can you please call the first item?
The first item is the bond authorization pension obligation bonds in the amount of seven hundred and fifty five million dollars.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and before I turn it over to TJ, oh, actually TJ, can I just ask that you first just introduce the folks that are on the call?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. So with us on the call is Cinder McNerney, she's our financial advisor from Hilltop Securities. We have Rick Manley, our bond counsel from Lock Lord, and we have Linda Bornival is our actuary from KMS Actuaries. They are our external experts that have been advising us throughout the process, and they're here to answer any technical questions that I can't answer. But they're here to also kind of lend their expertise to the conversation.
Appreciate that, and I would just ask those that will be speaking at that point to just please state your name and address for the record. And without further ado, I'll pass it to Counselor Allen at this point to get us started.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. I just have a few opening comments. So I won't ramble, I got some notes here, so first off, thanks, everybody for coming, and you know, what we got here is a great opportunity to make real progress on the pensions with hopefully more stable and consistent payments. So let me just tell you a little bit about the last couple of months from my point of view. Couple of months ago or ten weeks ago or so, Counselor Williams asked me to represent the council on this analysis process. So TJ is the leader of the entire team, but there's an internal team, which is Pat Burns and Lindsay Hackett, Chris Caputo, and a financial analyst named Kira. And there's an external team, which is about eight to ten people, three of whom were just introduced to you. And there's other people from other organizations. And every Wednesday, we meet by Zoom, the internal team and the outside people are all on the same call. And it's, you know, I don't say much at those calls because I'm learning as I'm going, but I think it's been great that the council has been able to be part of it. And hopefully I've represented us all well, I'm certainly trying to do that. The pension is such a challenge for us, we didn't create the problem, but we have to fix it. With all your support, we've made consistently good decisions on the pension for the twelve years I've been on the council. And we've gone from twenty six percent funded to thirty five percent funded, and the last thing I saw. But we got to keep on that path of pension responsibility. Because people's pensions are dependent on our decisions. So I just, I just wanted, my last comment, I just called everybody on the council, at least once, and some of you multiple times. Thanks for giving me the time or spending the time, if you didn't, if you were more comfortable talking with someone else besides just me, that's fine. Whatever you did to get yourself to a level of comfort, talking to myself, to colleagues, to the finance team. We all had to do what we have to do for this, you know, big decision, so, so thanks for, for being part of that, thanks for coming to the meeting. And at that, I'll just say I hand it over to TJ to talk about the process.
TJ, just one second, please, Madam Clerk, can you please recognize Counselor Edwards?
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Thank you. TJ, I think you're muted.
You think I, you think I triggered this out by now? What we're asking is the council to authorize up to seven hundred and fifty five million dollars for pension obligation bonds. As you know, we've done a couple of presentations for the city council to date. Memo has gone out summarizing where we're at and why we're looking at it. We meet weekly, as Counselor Allen alluded to, sometimes more frequently than that, keeping an eye on the market. And really what this authorization does is it allows us to continue to press forward until we make that ultimate decision to go or to not go and make this investment. As you know, the Fed is racing to increase interest rates, and they're going up pretty quickly, we have record high inflation. So there are a lot of factors that are playing into this decision. The authorization of seven hundred and fifty five million dollars allows us to keep going forward and looking at all the models that Linda Bornival has done for us as we kind of see what what scenarios may make sense for the city. Now, we may issue all seven hundred and fifty five million, we may issue a portion of that, or we may issue nothing. And that's all dictated by what's happening in the market at the time of the sale. We have a syndicate of underwriters on board led by Stifel and Ramirez as co-partner, managing partners, the seniors Stifel. They're, they're, they're the ones that are going to be actually selling our bonds on the market. So I don't want to get too much into the details, I know it's a big request of seven hundred and fifty five million. What I will say is, before any decision is made, I will come back for the council and present kind of the scenarios with this team of why we think this makes the most sense for the city, whether or not we move forward with all of it or none of it. There'll be a full briefing on the city council. Other steps beyond this, we need to go to A and F with a plan of finance and get their approval. And we need to do a mitigate, a risk mitigation strategy that'll all be presented as a complete package before we pull the trigger on anything. So with that said, I think it's best to open it up for questions for either me or our experts, but they're all here to kind of help make sure that the council has all their questions answered.
Great, TJ, thank you for providing that. At this time, I will invite counselors for any questions, Counselor Whitfield, we'll get started with you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, TJ, how many years is this bond payment, and how much is, is the payment annually?
We don't know that yet. What we're doing is running models, we, I showed the baseline model that we presented at the last finding of subcommittee meeting where it showed kind of just the baseline. And then from there, we're modeling different scenarios.
What was the baseline amount in the baseline years?
I want to say the, the number's around sixty million, maybe Linda, if you have that number handy when we did the, the base model, I'd want to say it was around sixty million.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Sure, my name is Linda Bornival and fifty two Hunt Road in Kingston, New Hampshire. So the model that we presented first off was a payment through twenty forty. That is a little further out than the retirement system currently is expected to fully fund the obligation. It's probably not needed to go up to twenty forty, so that's why TJ was saying we're really trying to fine tune that, that term of the bond that we want to align with the term of the unfunded payments, the retirement system currently is funding through. So right now, we're at twenty thirty three, we're looking probably maybe at twenty thirty seven or twenty thirty eight. The dollar amount, Cinder, verify this with me, it is around sixty million, right, for the POB repayments?
Well, I, I, we really have not concluded what the POB payment's going to be, they're going to ascend. Right now, we've been structuring the debt service to mirror different UAA unfunded amortization schedules to either twenty thirty seven, twenty thirty eight, twenty forty. We're trying to look at it with regard to the different kinds of interest rates that are happening right now, because as TJ said, we've seen an unprecedented increase in interest rates in the last couple of weeks and since the beginning of the year. To just put this in context a little bit, we, you know, I worked on, my office worked on three different pension obligation bonds, the only, the only pension obligation bonds that have been issued in Massachusetts in the last twenty years, almost twenty years. And at the end of twenty twenty one, and it became apparent Springfield, if Springfield could do it, it would be the biggest opportunity in the state. And it would correct and provide a sustainable way to afford the, to afford to pay the, the the you, the unfunded pension liability. Since then, interest rates have gone up a lot, so we're taking a look at not going all the way out to twenty forty, that was our original assumption, look at twenty thirty seven, thirty eight. So it's, there's a lot of moving parts, we don't really, I think by Wednesday of this week, when we have our next meeting, we probably will have a number of different scenarios for the city to take a look at what the debt service is going to do, and, and if we, if seven hundred and fifty million is funded, that would leave in terms of the city share of the unfunded pension liability, probably another sixty million unfunded.
Sixty or sixteen?
Sixty. That would be unfunded, so when we look at the debt service on the POB next to the amortization, the payback schedule on the unfunded sixty million all the way out to the same term as bonds might go, we're trying to look at those two numbers and look at how compares with the sort of collision course that the city's on right now. And what the regular amortization schedule would be if the city didn't issue pension obligation bonds and just extended the term of the payback of the existing city share of the unfunded pension liability. So we're very close, we've been working very closely with Linda, with the underwriters to get, keep up with what's happening and changing with rates to have a lot of information for the city to look at by Wednesday of this week. So that we can keep moving forward with the schedule that's, that hopefully, you know, it's not right now, our, in our goal in the last couple of weeks with the way rates have been rising and what the federal, what the Federal Reserve Bank has been saying about how it plans to issue increased rates is to help the city position itself in every aspect of the complexity of what has to get done. So that if rates come back down a little bit, or if we can get this deal done, that to the city satisfaction, that you're, that you're ready, because it requires still to get it, it has, we have to be rated, we have to go through that whole hurdle, we have to go through the state, we have to go through that hurdle. The first hurdle is what you're doing tonight, which is authorizing the bonds. Even after the bonds are authorized, there's a twenty day referendum period, we have to get past that before we would meet with the rating agencies. We have to present all the information we want to give to the city council, also to the State Office of Administration and Finance, and make sure that they're satisfied with our plan of finance, which we've been working very closely with bond counsel and the entire team to develop a plan that safeguards the city's interests and provides a sustainable and affordable cost for its pension, for its pension system, once it would get restructured through the process of either debt or no debt. But if there's no debt and it gets restructured, the goal would be that it could potentially be paid off with bonds if and when the market comes down, if in fact we lose the market in the process of trying to get positioned. Which is, which is a possibility with the rate, you know, the Federal Reserve is talking about raising rates seventy five basis points right now at their next meeting on May third and fourth. And after that, they meet on June fifteenth and sixteenth, and we're trying to come somewhere right after the May meeting and before the June meeting, if in fact the market accommodates us, we're looking at all sorts of things to consider how to bring the cost down on it, including giving up a call feature, including looking at whether or not there should be the use of any state qualified Bond Act provisions, which would allow a program rating on the bonds of double A, we're looking at, we want to make sure that there's no, nothing with regard to how the debt would be structured that would compromise the city's current credit ratings. We're looking at how many ratings are actually would be needed. So when you ask, what's the debt service on this, we really don't know yet, but we're, we're getting very close to evaluating that and evaluating the risk and how to mitigate the risk and how to bring down the cost on the bonds and see if we can get the deal done. And with significant and with substantial savings in the process. So we should have that in the next couple of days, but the goal right now is to position, to get the city positioned so that it's got this loan order in place, so that it, it, that, that this aspect of things doesn't hold things up in this calendar of events that we are trying to get done. Sorry.
No, I just want to get her name and address for the record.
I apologize, my name is Cinder McNerney, and my address, my work address is fifty four Canal Street, Boston, and I'm a.
Thank you for explaining the process, Cinder, definitely appreciate that. Um, TJ, so here, here's, I'm gonna tell, I'm gonna tell you guys my concern, but first I wanted to just ask. So when we came to like some of the finance meetings, it was like we're on a good schedule, we're paying into this pension, we should be caught up, I guess, by what, twenty thirty three, based on what Cinder said? How, why did that change, like? We were, we were making the payments that we said we were going to make until twenty thirty three, so why, why did that change?
Because this is an, right now, we're going up nine percent or more every year to pay towards the pension, and that at some point is going to be unsustainable. And this is an opportunity for us to look at a unique solution that not every community has the opportunity to do as a way to shore up our pension, get us closer to fully funded, and start addressing the backlog of the unfunded liability.
So what, what was the current amount we paid for FY twenty two?
Pat Burns, you have that number, I'm sure.
I'm looking at your, an old amortization schedule, but you were basically on a schedule to go from something like seventy, seventy five million up to two hundred million between now and twenty thirty three. I mean, it's, it's, it's hard to believe that that's how fast and how much it's increasing, it's, it's, uh, it's.
What's it, when you say it's increasing, what is it?
The annual cost, that the cost is ascending, and it's right now at about seventy five million, and in the next ten years, it's going to be, it will have ascended up to two hundred million in that one year.
You're talking about pension payments out to retired workers?
To, no, to.
Unfunded.
Yeah, to pay the pension liability. It has sense like that, so it goes from seventy five, you know, what I'm looking at, looks like it goes from seventy five million to eighty two to ninety to a hundred to a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty five, that's how.
That's if the interest rates or whatever continues at that rate, right?
Well, those numbers change, but it's, it's making an assumption, and Linda can speak to it better than me, but it's making an assumption that you earn what you're assuming you're going to earn, and this is how you have to contribute, if you're going to pay it as you go, as opposed to borrowing money to just pay it off and have a lesser cost on the money that you borrowed, which is how the POB works.
Okay, so here's my concerns with, with this schedule, first, it still feels rushed. Second, I don't feel comfortable voting on something that I haven't seen except for one time, maybe twice. But not really getting the details, and I'm sorry that I had, I didn't have the chance to call anybody, I had a busy week, but it still feels rushed to me. Third, when you're in a bond situation, if the market, if we, if we go into a recession, which looks like it's going to happen, usually when the Federal Reserve's rate go up and all these things that are happening, the market happens, we usually go into a recession because we've all been here before. And when we go into a recession, pension is something that we can fund less or not, but not if we have a bond. We're going to have to pay that sixty million, fifty million, whatever you guys come up with in the calculation, and then when that happens, it, it forces, because we have to do this, it forces other things to have to happen, like layoffs, furloughs, and I know this because I lived through it. I was in finance when we went into a recession, and I had to take furloughs, and people who were laid off, and normally the people who are laid off aren't the ones that can really afford it, it's not usually the senior level people, senior management is usually the lower level people that need their jobs that probably was like me, single mom, two kids, homeowner, had a lot of things going on, and yet we still had to do what we had to do to keep our jobs, and so that worries me that if we have this pension obligation, it has to be paid regardless because it's through a bond now. Right? So those are the things that concern me, but I can't honestly vote on something that I don't even know what I'm going to be voting on in the future, I don't know what these scenarios are. So just going to be voting blind, and that hasn't been working out too good for us with ARPA funds and other things that go through finance that we approve upfront and don't get information until the back end or last minute or, you know, just things like that, so those are my concerns. So right now, I don't support moving forward with this bond, and I will be voting no on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield, Counselor Govan, followed by Counselor Davila.
Thank you very much. So I've been trying to educate myself on this for the last couple of weeks, or since we've been talking about this. And I have been talking to some counselors, I've spoken to Counselor Allen, and from my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, because this is not my forte, I don't know anything about this, so I'm learning as I go along. So, um, I, I've, when you're talking about the market, you're talking about the stock market, is that correct?
No, we're talking about the bond market.
The bond market. And what exactly is that bond market, Ms. McNerney?
It's the, we're talking about, these bonds are issued, they were talking about the municipal bond market, and that includes tax exempt and taxable bonds. And it includes for, it's a market that municipal municipalities issue into, they issue the debt into and borrow at rates, it's a very well-established market that's been around for well over a hundred years. And it's depending upon the taxable market is different, has different buyers than the tax exempt market. And the bond market is long-term bonds, and there's also a municipal note market, so the city issues notes and bonds to finance its capital projects. It's got a special act associated with, that gave it the authority to issue pension obligation bonds. This loan order doesn't mean the city is committed to doing the bond, it just gives the city the authority, just like the special legislation gives the authority to, to issue it, should it make sense to do.
Okay, and it's, and where you're, when you're, you all are concerned about the, um, the interest rates increasing, which as we know that they will. So those, that's how it's going to affect the, the acquisition that the city gets at this time, if you guys go forward with it, correct?
Correct, it would, it would, if interest rates go up on this, it would negatively impact the rate at which the city borrows the money to pay off the unfunded pension liability that it has. Right, so, but it's, it's like if you have, it's like if mortgage rates go up, if they go up, and then they come down. So if the city can't get this done now, maybe it gets it done in a year, maybe it gets it done in two years. It's trying to position itself and evaluate what the opportunity is, evaluate the risk, evaluate how to mitigate the risk so that what the prior counselor indicated happened during either the last great recession, that that's not the output, we would, the city would establish reserves in connection with this from the bond issue itself, so it's, 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 we're, we're trying to evaluate every aspect of what could go wrong. The state, we need to present that information to the State Office of Administration and Finance. This kind of a, this kind of a bond issue is something that does take a while, we're trying to put it on a fast track, it does take a while to put it together with all the different parties, but nobody's doing anything unless it makes sense to do it, and it's been fully evaluated. And, you know, we've been evaluating it for the last several months, we're still evaluating it as the market changes.
Okay, and, and from my understanding, so right now, the pension fund is funded at thirty five percent. And when you and TJ said that we want to keep moving forward, keep moving forward, I guess where we want to get to is where is to fund the pension fund a hundred percent, that's correct? Right. And because I think when I was talking to Tim, he was saying that, so currently are, right now, the payment, pension payment is like sixty million dollars, and it'll go up every year. If we do this and you guys are able to get the seven hundred and fifty five million dollars in bonds, then our payment will stabilize for a number of years, is that correct?
That is correct.
And the goal would be to structure it so it stabilizes the city's financial position through the life of that bond, so if it goes to twenty thirty eight, stabilize, it's going to be structured so that it provides affordability through twenty thirty eight.
Right, so let's say now we do this and we move forward and we're going along ten years, twenty years. During that time, we're paying the current pension and funding a reserve. Um, is that what I'm hearing, I think I heard that?
Yes.
So that in twenty years, if we have a recession or when we have a recession, because Counselor Whitfield is correct, a recession is definitely coming. So when we have the recession, we'll be able to not have to necessarily have early retirements, not have to necessarily.
We won't be, yeah, Counsel, you're absolutely right, the whole purpose of the, of the reserve is to mitigate the risk of a, of a downturn in the economy. And that allows us to make the payments or make up for market losses if and when they happen, to ensure that we're paying off the pension and we're not impacting city services.
Okay, okay, thank you. And I, like I said, I've been hearing a lot of different opinions and thoughts. And I was hoping that I could speak to Mr. Ryan, because he sent us an email, but I wasn't able to read his document because it was a little dark, so I did want his opinion, I actually called out to him and left him a message, I didn't hear from him. But I am leaning towards voting for this, only because of the, you know, historically, you know, nonprofits do this all the time, you know, they, they kind of like bet on the market. Um, my husband's a gambling ambassador, I shouldn't be betting. But, you know, sometimes we do have to take risks, you know, and figure out a way to, how to mitigate things in the future, of course, there are no guarantees, but I think doing the best that we can with what we have, I think at some point is what needs to happen. Thank you so much, Counselor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Govan, Counselor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. President, before I, I ask if, if it's your purview, sir, we have an iPhone with a hand up, sir, I don't know if you want that.
Yeah, thank you, Counsel, I was going to get to that. Can the user with his name iPhone, can you please identify yourself?
I think that's Tim Allen.
Is that?
No, that's Tim right there.
I see Tim right there, forget it.
Please, I'll ask again, the user with the name iPhone, can you please identify yourself?
Yes, it's Counselor Perez, I'm having a problem with my computer.
I got, I got you next, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your presentation, TJ, I do have a number of questions, Mr. President. But TJ, just to piggyback off what Counselor Govan was just saying, would you say then that this will give us the ability to navigate the upcoming storm in the future much better, this plan?
Yes, we're actually modeling, we modeled and are continuing to modeling what would happen if a recession hit as part of our due diligence.
Very well, now TJ, what other municipalities have done this, if any?
Excuse me, Counsel, what was the question?
One of the municipalities, if any, have done this.
Brockton just did it, Quincy just did it, and the town of Andover just did it.
Did they do it recently, or did they?
Yeah, within the last six months.
Okay, okay. Now, what is, I think it might have been Ms. McNary who say that we're going to have some savings on this. Can you elaborate on that, either you or Ms. McNary, which other?
Yeah, so we'll, they will provide some budgetary relief and savings from, against our unfunded liability schedule that we're currently on. And as we structure the potential debt, the debt service numbers and the repayment schedule, we'll be able to, again, to get a better sense of what that looks like over the course of the, of the bond issuance.
This is going to get, get us funded from thirty five percent to what profit?
I'll, I'll ballpark it at ninety percent, Linda might have a better percentage if we do the seven fifty into the, into the system, if that'll get us to ninety percent funded or closer to a hundred, but it's certainly better than last in the Commonwealth.
Right, well, now with thirty five, correct?
Correct.
And that's with the fourteen and nine that we've been using.
Yeah, the nine percent, fourteen and then nine every year that we've done over the years.
Right, right, now, Ms. McNary, if I may ask you a question, you, in your presentation, you use a word, a statement that definitely caught my eye, and I quote, the, the city is in a collision course, collision course. Can you elaborate what you mean with that?
Well, to be paying, to be under prop two, the constraints of prop two and a half, and having your budget have to afford a payment right now, between now and twenty thirty three, that's rising every year from seventy five million to two hundred million. You know, I just listened to how it goes up, it goes up about ten million dollars a year. You know, I just listed how it goes up. It goes up about ten million dollars a year.
So you basically say that this.
So, so, so this year, let's just say it's seventy-five, then next year eighty-five, then the year after ninety-five or a hundred to a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty. To get up to almost two hundred million by the year twenty thirty-three is. Pretty scary. It's, it's, it sounds like it's not sustainable from an out, outside perspective. It's what the rating agencies are wondering, how is the city going to do that? I think that there's pressure or will be on the city to extend that amortization schedule, that payback schedule, instead of from twenty thirty-three. To twenty, you could go as, as long as twenty thirty-seven or twenty forty, just by going to Parac and asking to extend the schedule.
Right, uh, TJ.
Dead against that. Instead, there's an opportunity to save money versus not issuing debt. Potentially, we're still working on evaluating that.
I understand. Thank you, uh, Ms. McNairy. Uh, TJ, I realize that in the market or the financial market, there's no crystal ball per se. Nobody can. Definitely tell you the future for sure, but when we made the current arrangement, this was way pre-pandemic, right? Like, the pandemic was not anywhere to be seen.
Yes, so we go, we do a three-year agreement of a, a funding schedule that we do with Parac every year. Based upon an updated actuarial evaluation. Uh, right now, the, the retirement board is going through the most recent, going through a new. Actuarial evaluation, which will give us some updated numbers, and then we will enter into an agreement with the retirement board. On what the payments for the next three years will look like.
All right, thank you, TJ. Uh, Mr. President, uh, I have to say that um this vote got me up last night. I was turning on tossing uh on this vote. Um, I, seven hundred fifty-five million dollar is a lot of money. Uh, I am a little jittery about it. Uh, however, I'm also concerned that if we don't do anything. It's going to catch up to us eventually. I mean, I cannot foresee the city paying two hundred million dollars, up to two hundred million dollars a year. Uh, in a budget that it's roughly seven hundred ninety-seven million dollars is gonna, something's gonna have to give. Uh, so, it's a lot of money. I'm a little jittery, but I think that um. Us, i- i- it's a plan, and I think uh they've done the due diligence, and so. Doing nothing is not an option, because this is going to catch up to us. Uh, I'm, 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 I'm jittery. Uh, but right now, I'm leaning into voting in favor of this, because it's uh, one is our obligation to ensure. That uh the people that have spent their life working for the city are taken care of. Uh, but also we need to maintain core services. And uh, hopefully in the future avoid any kind of big issues. Uh, so, I'm leaning, um. I'm leaning in favor of it. I look forward to more, to continue a robust conversation, and uh those are my words. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Davila. Uh, I'll shoot to Councilor Perez, followed by Councilor Letterman.
Yes, I just, I just want um someone to just reintegrate. What will be the risk factors if we don't enter in, in this um. Obligation bonds at this point, and I heard the increase of amount of money. Um, from the perspective of furloughs and all that, will that prevent that from happening? That, 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 that's the question that I have at this point.
So, Council, Council, the um answer to that, I mean, the risk of, the risk of not doing, not doing anything, I guess I'll be more basic. We may not be doing this at all, and the decision may be made in two weeks from now, or excuse me, a week from now, when the Fed raises interest rate. If they raise it uh point seven five or seventy-five basis points, then game, set, match. We're not going to be able to afford to do this. Um, so we're racing up against the clock, hoping to beat the June interest rate uh increase by the Fed, uh and then trying to do that. Backing out of that is, we also have to watch the, the stock market, because we need to return on investment. Of at this point, six, seven, five or more over the life of the debt issuance. Uh, so we need to factor that into the model. Um, right now, we can sustain for a couple of years while we look at options. So if we don't do this. And we continue to monitor and position ourselves, the next time this is an opportunity, uh, we'll be much better off. But I mean, we have a few more tools in our toolbox that, that's not all doom and gloom, and yes, we're on the collision course. We're on a, but, you know, a level that's somewhat unsustainable. But it's not, we're not there yet. Having this opportunity, if it works, puts us in a better position. To have uh budget continuity and knowing where, how the appropriations stacking up. And that, we will know as a group when we sit down Wednesday and start modeling the rest, the, the scenarios that we've been looking at. Um, so I'm not at the furlough and the layoff doom and gloom yet. Is there a risk of that? Perhaps, the economy is cyclical. We've been through it, two thousand eight to two thousand eleven, which is terrible. A set of years for us, uh, the dark days for, for, at least for me being in the finance role, so um. I don't think we're there yet, um, but I, I want to make sure people realize, the council realizes, the public, there is some risk involved.
Thank you, thank you. Um, like my counselor, um, Davila, I know this is new. A lot of information, but considering the factor of what is happening today. I'm more inclined to vote yes in favor of this decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Perez, Council Letterman.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. President. Uh, the day before I was elected in two thousand and seventeen. Somebody said to me that the unfunded pension liability was the monster under the bed of municipal government, and. Uh, they were right. The, the first meeting I attended the following day as a counselor-elect was the Finance Committee meeting chaired by Counselor Allen. On the pension obligation, and I think I've watched uh over my five years on the council, uh, the expenditure. Uh, for the unfunded pension liability rise by millions and millions of dollars. I think it is the fastest rising, if not one of the fastest rising. Uh expenditures in the city budget, and you know, if I'm, if I'm incorrect on that, TJ, correct me. Um, but every, every dollar that we have to spend uh to meet that unfunded pension liability, which certainly was not our doing. I don't think it was the doing of, of really anybody on the council at this moment, um, is, is a dollar that is not able to be spent. Uh, on capital improvements or infrastructure or tax relief. And so. If there's an opportunity to be able to stabilize that rising number uh with a safeguard in place. Uh, in the form of the reserve fund, uh, and the, you know, actuaries are able to, to say that it's going to. Be able to do so in a stronger way than just extending the rating schedule, then I'm inclined to do it. Um, I, I think the question is, you know, if you've run the final analysis and, you know, just extending out. The payment schedule, if that ends up costing less, that's what you'll do. Am I incorrect?
Correct.
And what, what, say, say for, for the sake of individuals watching, what, what happens if we just don't pay the unfunded liability? What, what would occur?
Like, if we don't pay what we're.
Say, say it got to the unsustainable point where we could not pay the unfunded pension liability. It was just not feasible for the city to make the payments. It's risen to two hundred million dollars, which is, you know, all, you know, more than our property tax revenue combined. What, what would happen?
Uh, Pat, you want to take that one?
Yeah, I'm, that's not an option. Um, that's, that payment's required July first of every year from. It's.
I mean, the short, the short answer, I guess, would be bankruptcy.
Right. So, so the, the, the analyst earlier used the term collision course. We are on a collision course, I think. Uh, um, you know, you presented a lot of information to us, and I, I think it sounds like. The only way that you pull the trigger on this is if all of these numbers add up. I, I can't imagine that you would pull the trigger if the numbers didn't add up. Uh, and so, I, you know, I think that stabilizing the annual payment is important in the, in the broader budget context as well. Uh, and so that's why I'm inclined towards voting for it, but certainly open to hearing folks' questions. Uh, but that was my main question today is. If the extension with Parac were to net less of a financial impact, that's the option you would go with, and you've indicated that was true.
Correct. So, we're looking at all the options, and, you know, and the decision's ultimately made. I'm coming back to the city council with a full plan. Of finance, a miss, a risk mitigation plan, and to show the actual structure of what it is we're about to do, if we're going to do it. If the numbers do not add up, and meaning the interest rate's too high, the return on investment's too low, we just don't do it. But we'll be better positioned that when the market corrects itself, we'll be able to do it uh next time. And yes, we will look at other options, which would be asking the retirement board in Parac to extend the, the schedule out from. Twenty thirty-three to some other, some other year. And those are all scenarios we're going to be asking. Um, the actuaries in Lyndon are run, is saying, you know, to give us all of our options. Uh, and that's kind of where we're heading right now.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Council Letterman, Council Woodfield. If you don't mind yielding to Council Hurst, who hasn't spoken on this, and then I'll circle back.
I'll yield the count, I'll go after Council Woodfield.
Thank you, Council. Um, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm aware that something needs to be done, right? Uh, and I, and I'm comfortable doing something, but we don't even know what that something is. And I think that's very irresponsible of a city council to approve something that we don't even know what it is. We haven't even seen it yet. And when you talk about risk, no one can guarantee one way or the other. So we do something, right? And we vote for this, right? And then the market crashed, and there's not enough in this reserves account. TJ already said, there's no way that we can guarantee that furloughs or layoffs is not going to take place. He can't guarantee that one way or the other. They can't guarantee what the market is going to do. They can't guarantee that the interest rates are going to go up. These are assumptions. They are, um, the first set of assumptions that we've seen isn't even the ones that they're going to go for. It was a baseline. I think it's irresponsible to vote on something that we haven't even seen. We are gambling with taxpayers' money, because at the end of the day, when the bond has to be paid back. Who's paying the bond back? Your money, my money, and the residents of the city of Springfield is paying the bonds back. And in the, in the interim. If the market does crash like it did in between two, two thousand and eight and two thousand and eleven, when I lived through this um scenario. Then the citizens that's going to struggle the most are the ones that need our help the most. That haven't really been getting our help the most with ARPA funds, everything that comes down the pipe, that's rush, 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 and this is no different. I know that Counselor Allen said on the committee, but there has been many opportunities for the Finance Committee to come to us during the process and say. Here's where we're at. We're doing X. Now we're doing Y. Counselor Allen is sitting on these meetings, yes, but we just want to keep you guys updated. As to what is happening. That didn't happen. Once again, we're in a situation where we got to hurry up and do something before a certain date. Because we don't have enough time, and I just don't believe it. I don't believe that it happened with Elm Street. I believe that folks knew. Um, that this was coming down the pipe even before January, and we didn't get any information to the last minute. Folks knew that they were going to take some of the ARPA funds money and buy these buildings, yet we get the information when it's already happened. Folks knew that they're going to um create a Build Back Better Springfield program that's not even going to help. The most disenfranchised population in a way it's supposed to be, because it wasn't structured that way in the first place. Um, and we didn't know until it was already in place. We got to do better as a council. And really do our due diligence before we accept something that we don't even know what that something is. That's our fiduciary responsibility. It's our fiduciary responsibility not to gamble. This is gambling with the residents of the city of Springfield's money. That's what it is. When you invest in the stock market, which I do on a weekly basis, you're gambling with your money. But now we're gambling with other people's money, and I think we should have the whole scenario in front of us before we say, yeah, let's go ahead and approve it. We approved so many things in the blind, and they come back to us, and they said, well, this money was already approved, so now we could just go ahead and do X, Y, and Z. Without a plan. Like, we still haven't got a plan for the MGM money that's sitting there, nine point six million. Been waiting for that for a couple of years now. So, I think that the cycle keeps repeating itself, and counselors keep on letting it happen. I'm not going to let it happen, but if you guys do, and then in the future, some of these risks that I'm talking about here, that I live through here. Come to fruition, then whoever votes yes have to answer to that. It's not going to be me, and I just wanted to say that we don't know what we're voting for here, so why are we voting?
Thank you, Council Woodfield, Councilor Hurst.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. Um, and I, I appreciate your testimony, Councilor Woodfield. Uh, TJ, it seems like there are a lot of unknowns, which have been highlighted throughout this meeting. Already. I guess my question for you is, why can't you come back to us when you have. Some of these unknowns figured out and ask us to approve it. Right now, you're asking us to approve seven hundred and fifty-five million dollars, which. I, I'd imagine probably will not happen again in my lifetime. And so, um. But you also said that that might not be the number. So why can't we wait? Until you've gotten us the risk mitigation plan. You all have met and have more finalized numbers. To actually vote on this and then give you what it is that you need. Why can't we do that?
So, the only, the only reason, the only answer I had to that one is, uh, we're up against the Fed Reserve. And raising of the interest rates. And we didn't know in January or October, when we started talking about this, November, when we talked about this. But we really dug, started digging into in January, that the interest rates are going to start to skyrocket. That inflation was going to be record inflation since the eighties. Uh, those things were not part of the conversation originally. We knew rates were going up. We knew. But we didn't know they're going to go up fifty to seventy-five basis points. Um, e- every meeting that the Fed might be meeting. I mean, that was just unheard of and unthought of. But now it's real. We think it's going to be fifty basis points uh in May. And seventy-five, uh, point seven-five percent or seventy-five basis points in June. So we're up against that clock. And we're up against the twenty-day referendum. We're up against going to the bonding rating agency. So. Our request, as uncomfortable as it may be, is up to seven fifty, while you let us figure out what makes sense. And if you were to ask me right now, today, does it make sense? The answer is, I don't know. And I need more time, but I don't have more time, because I can promise you, if the rates get to five percent. And we sell for five percent, we're not doing this. We sell for four and a half percent. We may not be doing this, you know, so. I need to have that luxury of that little bit of time to beat the June meeting. And that's why it feels rushed and condensed and uncomfortable. What I can assure you was. Going to happen is I can't do it without coming back to the council with the exact plan that we're submitting to A and F, because A and F is going to say. Where's the council on this? And I'm going to say they're fully briefed as of whatever the date is, and here's where, what we're presenting. As the plan going forward, and here's all the merits and reasons why. And, um, I know it's uncomfortable. I know there's a little. Um, risk in that sense, but that's all we're asking. And I can tell you this. As probably the only person on this call that's going to lose their job if I bet wrong, is probably going to be me. Um, so, this is something we take very seriously, uh, and all the work we've done, and I've leaned on Cinder and Linda and Rick. Heavily throughout this process, to make sure that I'm educated enough that I can advise the council in my role and, and uh the administration in my role. And I could tell you, if the numbers don't tie out, we're not doing it.
Yeah, no, I, I, I appreciate that, TJ. Um, you know, I guess, you know, I struggle.
I, I understand it. I struggle asking for it, knowing this is, you know, the, it's a big ask. And I, and I, it's not lost on me that this is a big ask. But it's also a big opportunity that I don't want to lose the momentum that we have right now, and. You know, we'll keep plugging forward. You know, I got other stuff I could be working on, but this is important enough. Uh, you want to talk about losing sleep at night? This is the last. Uh, big puzzle piece to help the city make sure it's fully set up for future years to come.
Yeah, no, understood. I, I, I know it might be a big puzzle piece for the city, uh, and for those individuals whose pensions we're playing with. Uh, they, they, they might lose a, a lot of sleep as well if they knew about what was happening, and so.
We're not playing with anyone's pension. And, and we're, we're trying to fund the unfunded liability that we got to fund anyway.
Understood, understood. Um, and so, I, I guess my biggest issue is that nobody knows about this. And, you know, it, it may or may not be your fault, TJ. It, it may just be a timing issue. But the idea that, you know, we're asking for, um, or you're asking us. To give you authorization for seven hundred and fifty-five million dollars, uh, it, it's a lot of money. Uh, and I, I look back to, you know, when we were giving away money, a hundred and twenty-three million dollars. In ARPA funds to those who needed it most, those who had been disproportionately impacted. From COVID. And I, you know, I saw and read repeatedly the mayor boasting about. Having all of these meetings with neighborhood councils. Civic associations and, and other organizations, and you know, that Counselor Govan's point. You know, we heard from one individual, but we only heard from one individual, because that particular individual probably. Heard through the grapevine that this was getting. heard through the grapevine that this was getting, getting ready to occur. And so I guess my biggest frustration is that nobody knows. And, you know, when we had the ARPA funds, there were town halls, listening sessions. There were surveys to elicit, you know, how the money should be spent. And, you know, when it comes to probably the most significant investment that we'll make, none of that has occurred, or at least it hasn't occurred for me. You know, and you, you flip it to, you know, the six point five million dollars that we just gave out, you know, to, to make the rich richer. It was thrown on the agenda, and we're asked to vote for. Right? It's no different than what it is that is occurring today. I think, you know, councillor Woodfield pointed out that councillor Allen might know about it. But I didn't know about it until Wednesday or Thursday. I went to an hour long meeting. And even while I'm trying to digest it now, you all still have a lot of unknowns, which means that I in turn have just as many, if not more than you, and you all have been talking about this for a long time. It, and for me to be able to explain it to my constituents who are completely left in the dark, I just, I just feel like we're in the same place, if not worse than where we were just at a couple of weeks ago. And I, you know, I, we just approved a resolution regarding unanimously, regarding spending large amounts of money without having an opportunity to discuss it. And the reason why I voted for the resolution is the same reason I voted against the six point five million was that I didn't have the time to let people know. I don't know if this is good, bad, or otherwise. You obviously don't know if it's good, bad, or otherwise. I mean, it sounds like you're leaning towards it. It, it might be a good idea, but who knows a month from now? Who knows two months from now or two weeks from now? Um, seems like it's good right now, but at that very point that you know, I think we need time to convey this information to our constituents to see what it is, you know, that, that, that they want. I mean, um, you know, we haven't had the luxury to have the neighborhood council meetings, the civic association meetings. Um, no, I haven't even seen an article on mass lives regarding these to let folks know. So of course, nobody's hand from their constituents in terms of whether they want it or, or, or whether they don't. And then I, you know, I'll, I'll just conclude with the fact that, you know, this is the second time, you know, Mr. President, that we're dealing with these significant decisions in special meetings. So even if folks want it to be a part of this or to watch it or to understand it, it's at a time that nobody's expecting. They probably would expect for us to vote. You know, certainly Friday, you know, was unrealistic, which is where we voted for the six point five million. But, you know, Monday at five thirty is not when we normally meet. And so folks can't even be a part of this significant decision that, that we have to make. So, you know, I, I think we've always said that we've got to do better. Uh, now we're part of the problem because we're allowing it to happen without informing our constituents. And I, I agree with councillor Woodfield. That's, that's what we signed up to do. Um, so with that being said, Mr. President, uh, and because there are a ton of unknowns, um, I, I, at this time would like to invoke rule twenty. Uh, and, you know, hopefully that'll give folks an opportunity to at least be able to have a conversation with their constituents at the very least. Uh, we might get an article in the paper so that people either know or know that this is actually happening.
Well, uh, councillor, there was an article in the paper, Patrick Johnson, I think he's on this call, wrote the article because I talked to him extensively about it. Uh, push back, I'll push back a little bit on the fact that.
So, Mr. President, I think I invoked rule twenty. So with that, with that being said, I don't think we need to hear from TJ anymore. Uh, there, there are unknowns.
I acknowledge that, councillor. I have acknowledged that. There are unknowns. And I told, I've been nothing but.
I don't understand why.
I'm going to call for order, please, please.
It, it should end all debate, Mr. President. And so.
I'm just looking, taking a look at the, the. Okay. Hey, councillor, so you have a motion to invoke rule twenty. Um, I do know that there are count, other councillors that were in the queue to speak on this. Uh, I don't know if you want to allow them an opportunity to actually, to their point? Or would you just like to maintain that?
I, I don't think rule twenty allows it, Mr. President.
All right. So, uh, with that being said, rule twenty has been invoked, uh, which uh, ends debate. And uh, with that being said, uh, I guess TJ, let me just ask, um, I, I guess the, the appropriate thing there is just to maybe schedule a finance subcommittee to have further discussion um, to, 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 to let this matter be dealt with in that context, or I'm happy to, to hold another special meeting to.
We're up against the clock on the sense of uh, the ratings, or excuse me, the rates that are going to go up on May third and fourth. Uh, so we've essentially just killed this proposal, um, unless we can have more meetings. I don't know what else. I don't know what more I can give councillor Hurst on this issue that we make him feel any more comfortable to vote on it. Uh, other than I've been nothing but open and honest about the challenges we're up against and the forces we're up against. And uh, that is where I've been at, and I've been there from day one. And don't act like this is new, councillor, uh, Hurst. This is not.
I'm just going to ask that we maintain a level of performance, please.
All right. I'm just defending the fact that this process has been open and honest with everybody.
I just want my constituents to know, TJ. Thank you.
You could call me anytime you want, councillor. I could, I can inform you to inform your constituents.
Mr. President.
Yes, I, with that being said, I'm going to end the debate, uh, any back and forth. Uh, councillor Davila, yes, did you have a point?
I do have a point, but I want to be my, all the councillors have their hands up. Are they, were they looking to interject? Uh, no.
No, they, they will not be able to be heard on this item.
Correct. Uh, with regards to rule twenty, Mr. President, uh, um, just looked it on myself. Uh, so it needs to go to the city controller for an opinion. And what's the timeline that needs to come back?
Uh, yeah, I.
You mentioned the finance meeting, but I'm reading this as if going to the, to the controller.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, councillor, there's also seems like councillors also have, uh, other questions that, that, that needs to be answered. So I'm saying further discussion on this topic might be needed. I'm happy to do that within the timeframes that are set by special meetings and/or again, the finance subcommittee, eight hours. Um, so so as it, as it reads, yes, you were right with the city controller should make a report back to the council before said orders finally pass. I don't know that, the answer to that question in, in regards to that timeline without the controller's input.
Thank you.
And that is uh, something I can circle back with the council on, um, but we would have to reach out to them first.
Thank you.
I don't mind holding the finance subcommittee, um, councillor, um, president, whenever you see fit.
Okay. All right. Thank you all.
On order.
Councilor Brown.
Um, I was going to move the question. I didn't, uh, that doesn't, you can't do that.
Because councillor Hurst is. His, his motion is, uh, will take precedent, uh, because he was in the queue. All right. So with that being said, councillors, let's, I'll circle back on some, just in terms of the information around, uh, the timeline for the controller that's needed, as well as, uh, any particular meetings. I can work with councillor Woodfield on, on scheduling that. Okay. I'll see you all at seven o'clock. Thank you.